I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And I'll be seated. My name is Bob Minyon and I serve as the Vice President of the Laurel Board of Trade. And our moderator this evening, I'd like you to stand, is Pamela Hunter. Pamela is the Deputy Director of the Civil Division of the Superior Court of the District of Columbia Courts. I would also like to recognize Tabitha Cronie and Robert Rhodes. They're our interpreters for the evening and they're here for the members of our audience who are hearing them here. We also have with us Mary Ann Allen. She's seated in the back, raise your hand. And she's with the Prince George's County League of Women Voters and she'll be helping to sort audience questions. Additionally, we have several members of the Board of Trade with us this evening. Our Chairman, you can stand, Jim Cross. Jan Abel, our Treasurer. We have former Chairman Matthew Coats with Photography by Madison, Main Street Business. We have Joe Tredway with us tonight on the Board of the Board of Trade with Lori Barrett of Sunflower Wellness Center. Additionally, we have John Donahue with the Community Insurance Services right here. As a disclaimer, we have three candidates, Mike Lesz, Carl DeWalt, and Jeff Mills that are members of the Laurel Board of Trade. No candidates have had any prior knowledge of the questions and as a 501(c)(6) corporation, nonprofit corporation that the Laurel Board of Trade is, we do not endorse any candidates. We are using the League of Women Voters protocols for asking candidate questions so to eliminate any bias whatsoever. I'd also like to request that everybody in the chamber silence their cell phones now so that we have no, no one is disturbed during the forum. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, but first I would like to thank the City of Laurel and the Laurel TV for televising tonight's event. So we're all going into people's homes here in Laurel. Additionally, I'd like to thank the Laurel Board of Trade for its role in organizing this evening's event and tell you a little bit about the Laurel Board of Trade. The Laurel Board of Trade membership is composed mostly of Laurel-based businesses and has as its mission to further business within the City of Laurel and economic growth. Some of the events we sponsor, I'm sure are very familiar to all of you, are the Main Street Festival, which brings in over 50,000 people to Laurel that day, and August Back to School Backpack and School Supply Distribution for Laurel area schoolchildren, River Fest Family Fun Day and Car Show, which is intended to showcase our beautiful riverfront park, and the Farmer's Market located on Main Street which runs from June through October. And we recently started a new initiative called Second Saturday. We also sponsor various business forums throughout the year and one of our favorites events is coming up Thursday, October 26th, which is the Trick or Treat on Main Street. We literally get thousands of, it seems like thousands of children out that night. It's a great event. With this said, let me outline some ground rules for tonight's questioning. Each candidate will begin with a two-minute opening statement. The opening statement should address why the candidate is running for office and the three top priorities for your term in office. We will then go into questions that Pamela Hunter will ask each candidate. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the questions and 30 seconds should there be a need for a follow-up rebuttal. The candidates will be able to see a timer which will signal them as to how much time is left. The candidates are seated in alphabetical order on the dais and they have drawn numbers which appear below their name. Opening statements will be given in order from number one through seven. Closing statements will be given in order from number seven to one. The questions will be asked in random order thus giving everyone the opportunity to be the first to answer a given question. We will start the questioning with some pre-selected questions and then we will be taking questions from the audience. So if you have a question, you'll see there are pencils and pads of paper next to you. Please write it down. For those watching the forum from home, we have set up a special cell number for you to text questions. That number is 301-346-5926. I'll repeat it. 301-346-5926. And please text any question to that number. After all questioning is complete, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. We also have some refreshments out in the chamber, outside the chamber in the lobby, and we encourage candidates and voters to gather there for further conversation at the completion of the evening. We have nine candidates running for five positions in this cycle for the City Council. Our Mayor Craig Mo has not been invited as he's not up for election this cycle. Remember, if you are registered to vote in Prince George's County and live in the City of Laurel, you are automatically registered to vote in the city. Registered voters reside in either Ward One or Ward Two. You will be voting for two councilpersons representing your ward as well as an at-large councilperson. I would like each candidate to stand as I call your name. The candidates at large are Mike Lesz. The candidates for Ward One are Carl DeWalt, Valerie Nicholas, and Ed Ricks. And the candidates for Ward Two are Fred Smalls, Keith Sidnor. And these are the Ward Two candidates that are with us tonight. There are two that declined being here, that are running. Their names are Tommy Matthews and Adrian Rousseau. They're also running for Ward Two, but they're not able to attend tonight because of a scheduling conflict. Five of these candidates will be elected November 7th to a two-year term. I would now like to turn over the questioning to our moderator this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, candidates. We're going to jump right in. Is everyone ready? I can tell by the smiles on your face. So, our first question, we're going to start with Ms. Nicholas. And then we will give you the, I will call out the candidate who I'm going to ask to respond next. So... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ready to jump right in. I forgot about the opening.
I probably misled you.
No, 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 no. It's been a long day. So, we want to give you an opportunity to start. We're going to start with number one first, correct, in that order? Okay, so, I think I was correct. So I just happened to call Ms. Nicholas. So, Ms. Nicholas will entertain your opening statement.
Can't hear me. I'm sorry. "The City of Laurel is truly a great place to live, work, and play. I work at the University of Maryland Laurel Regional Hospital. I live here in the city and I've made myself very visible in the community. If I'm re-elected, I'd like to focus on three areas that are just a little different from the past. The first one is more public engagement. The second one is focusing more on youth services and senior services. And the third one is public safety. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. We will now hear from Mr. Sidnor.
Good evening, everyone. Keep the mic on. Sorry about that. Once again, good evening, everyone. I'm Keith Sidnor. I'm a candidate for Ward Two. I've been a resident of Laurel for over 15 years and I watched this community grow from a small city into a city that expected local lead in economic development. I know moving forward, we can make sure that our community is always involved in the decision-making process, that our ideas are included. I grew up in a small town similar to Laurel where my parents raised me to always take care of home first. And to me, my community is my home. As your Ward Two Councilman, I will make sure our neighbors here in Laurel come first. That's why I decided to run, to bring ordinary people like you and I to the table, to be included, and create better solutions and improve ideas. I'm not organized people. I'm a union steward. I worked on my collective bargain agreement with my management team implementing and writing our collective bargain agreement. I served 24 years in the United States Navy, retired as a Chief Petty Officer. I was deployed four times, two tours to Kuwait and two on a tour of Afghanistan. So, three things I want to work on. I want to be accessible and responsible to you. That's number one. I want to create job opportunities for all our neighbors. I want to improve our parking and transportation options. And also, I want to expand our recreation programs for our youth and our senior population. These are the things I want to work on as your Councilman for Ward Two. Thank you.
Mr. Sidnor, we'll now hear from Mr. Mills.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I'm Jeff Mills. I'm married to the beautiful Juanita Mills, sitting in the back there. I lived in Prince George's County for over 45 years and resided in Laurel for seven. I graduated from Duval High School and attended local colleges in Maryland for business and leadership training. I have 10 years of experience with the State Highway Administration. I am a very successful business owner right here in Laurel. Tonight, I'm not here to debate. I'm here to illuminate the light on the real Team Laurel. The real Team Laurel is every citizen that resides in Laurel. It's you, it's me, it's all of us that makes up the real Team Laurel. Laurel's motto is "Progressio per populum," Latin for progress through people. Did you ever think what makes Laurel a great place to live? Well, we have to feel invested in our community that makes us a member and gives us membership. I believe that every member has the right to belong, feel welcome, and should have influence in community issues. My platform is jobs, safety, and infrastructure. How do you feel about returning citizens coming home and becoming productive citizens? And our neighbors becoming entrepreneurs? And our veterans on the home front giving training to better their life skills here in the home front? You like that? That's what I do and that's who I am. I invest in people and I have trained the very ones that I referenced. When you help people grow, you grow. That's what my dad taught me, who was the City Council in C-Pleasant. Transitioning into safety, each driver must have a DOT physical card and that includes drug testing. I am helping the real Team Laurel to just say no to drugs. I am helping our officers while these people are saying no to drugs and alcohol, that they are helping the police. And my name is Jeffrey W. Mills and that W is for winner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. We'll now hear from Mr. DeWalt.
Thank you for inviting me to your house tonight. It's an honor to speak to all the Laurel citizens. My three priorities are: we need to establish integrity, proactive safety initiatives, and outstanding government transparency. So together, we can seek solutions to situations in the Laurel community that cause fear or threatens our quality of life. I will seek tax breaks for the time-honored Laurel residents. Stop the massive proposed Patuxent Greens Development Project. They're going to replace a beautiful open-air golf course with 450 housing units. Improve and execute safety measures along Main Street to help protect our seniors, merchants, and citizens, concentrating on speeding vehicles, crosswalk safety, and crime. Government transparency, which is one of my priorities. It's been 10 months since our beloved Marcus Colbert was killed by a reckless driver on a 25 mile per hour residential street while doing the job he loved. Still, no official statement from our city government on the findings of that investigation and justice for Marcus have occurred. I'd like to address the deplorable conditions of the alleys in Old Town Laurel. During dry condition, dust blankets our homes and during wet conditions, it creates standing water which breeds mosquitoes and bugs. We also are starting to get complaints of people seeing rats. The city needs to take the surface maintenance over for those alleys and stop these deplorable conditions. A fair and equitable hiring and promotion system based on merit, experience, education, and community service within the city. Not what your name is, who you're related to, or what organization you belong to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank the Laurel Board of Trade for the opportunity to speak to you, the residents and business owners of our great city. I've raised my family in Laurel since 1992. As a homeowner, or rather as the hometown for my children and grandchildren, I've worked to play my part to make our community a place where we can all be proud of. I've served my community as President of my Homeowners Association and as a PTA President. And I served 11 years as a member of the Board of Directors for Laurel Regional Hospital. The last four of those years as Board Chairman. My daytime job, I served the State of Maryland as the Assistant Secretary of State. I am passionate about service to my community. I worked in association with this body, the Board of Trade, to organize the Laurel Back to School Jam that provides school supplies for our city students and helped establish the Laurel Community Garden. Laurel's distinctive neighborhoods in both Ward One and Ward Two are our strength. With your support, my colleagues Mike Lesz, Ed Ricks, Valerie Nicholas, and our newest addition to Team Laurel, Keith Sidnor, will continue seeking opportunities to enhance the services to our neighborhoods and businesses. Over the years, the Council has made public safety, infrastructure improvements, and jobs our top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small. And now we'll hear from Mr. Ricks.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to thank the Board of Trade and all of you for coming and the people at home. Turn this on by now. I want to thank the Board of Trade and everyone here in the audience and the people at home for tuning in and giving us a chance to make a case to return to office. I'm a lifelong resident of Laurel. I'm serving now again on the City Council for a fourth term. I enjoy what I'm doing. I enjoy working to solve problems here in the city. And if elected, these are some of my goals. I want to develop Laurel as a comprehensive, balanced, and community with a full array of integrated and complementary land uses. I want to retain and enhance Laurel's image as an incorporated city and a community providing a full range of services and functions and striving to provide a quality living and working environment for all of our citizens. As a person that has been appointed by the State of Maryland to sit on one of its committees to study transportation infrastructures, I'm very proud of that appointment by the state and also working to handle the traffic flows around the railroad station. I want to continue to do that. I want to conduct growth and development in an orderly manner. I want to provide for a quality living environment. I want to provide for and promote a balanced economy. I want to encourage a large range of housing types. I want to work more with the hospital and to provide services that we can have with the health campus out there at the hospital. And of all, I want to encourage use of the public transportation here in the City of Laurel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Now we will hear from Mr. Lesz.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Laurel Board of Trade for hosting tonight's Candidates Forum. You will not hear from me what I may do, but you will hear from me as how I have been serving all the citizens of our city from my adult life, since returning to the city almost 50 years ago. During my service on the Laurel City Council, I've utilized my analytical skills to ensure that our police department is well-equipped and trained to protect all of us and our city departments have the necessary resources to meet the service needs of our city residents, whether those needs be adults, seniors, children, or grandchildren. I've annually scrutinized our auditor's report of our employees' pension plan fund and working with the Mayor and City Council, we have deposited an additional $2 million into the fund in behalf of the city. Those funds will be available for those retirees as they move into their 80s and 90s and some of them will live that long. Finally, my service to our city does not start or end in attending Mayor and City Council meetings. It includes representing you and testifying in Annapolis, involvement in the Maryland Municipal League and National League of Cities, and other organizations impacting our city. And for the past two years, serving as Chair for one of the seven subcommittees as we moved toward a University of Maryland Laurel Medical Campus to meet the changing medical needs of our city residents. Hopefully, tonight, we can also talk about other important economic and jobs creation efforts that I and my colleagues working with the Mayor have brought to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. So now we are ready to begin with our questions. So for the first question, we're going to start with Ms. Nicholas. As you know, we can experience severe weather events like huge snowstorms, tornadoes, and rain events that can cause tremendous upheaval in people's lives. Do you believe the city is prepared for these events and what specific ideas do you have to lessen the impact on our citizens?
Thank you. We have a great emergency management team for snow preparation. We are always prepared for, we're watching the weather very closely and we're always very prepared for snow emergencies. We've sent out proper notices. We are always checking on neighbors. We have people to go and shovel snow for sidewalks and things for seniors when they can't. We have the Command Center that's open 24 hours during emergencies. We are very much prepared. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalt, same question. Absolutely. As you know, we can experience severe weather events like huge snowstorms, tornadoes, and rain events that can cause tremendous upheaval in people's lives. Do you believe the city is prepared for these events and what specific ideas do you have to lessen the impact on our citizens?
I spent 28 years as a police officer for Laurel and there wasn't one event that I felt we were unprepared, other than the flooding down with the Patuxent River. And that wasn't a fault of the cities. That was more a fault of WSSC. But everything that has come our way from tornadoes, the heavy rains, and anything as far as natural disasters, I think we handled it very, very well. There's always room to learn. I believe they're more prepared for the flooding now due to, they put actually sensors along the river that will regulate the height of the water and everything like that. But as far as evacuating people, displacing people, and taking care of people during natural emergencies, I believe that we are very well-prepared for it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sidnor?
Yes, ma'am. I believe the city is very prepared for emergency management. If something was to happen, well, I will implement as well, some practice drills as well to make sure we can handle it. Well, I know we can. So so often, we just do some command drills in the city and have residents, if they get the word, if something has happened, have a sheltered place where they can go.
Thank you. Mr. Small, same question?
I'd ask everyone seated here, if you have driven during a heavy snowstorm from Route 197 up Cherry Lane and you've encountered the very slow response of our county's snow removal, cross Route One into Laurel on Cherry Lane and you see the vast difference. The streets are generally plowed, roads are cleared. That answers the question in and of itself. We are prepared. We've recently upgraded our Emergency Command Center. We have a number of different types of alerts, telephone, email, and other types of alerts that go out to notify residents. And it's something that we are constantly working to improve. So, yes, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Mr. Ricks?
Thank you. As a person that's been a senior member of both the Fire Department and the Rescue Squad and have served as the Chairman of the Emergency Services Commission here in the city and what you've also heard about the other services that we have, we are extremely prepared. Our Mayor has been always said that we can't count on the county. We have to defend ourselves first. That's the first line of preparation. So we are constantly working with the Police Department and our Fire Departments and Rescue Squad and we train with them on a regular basis and we are prepared.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mills?
Well, just so happened I have a packet here. I teach snow college and this picture here is a picture of the snow that was in 2016 where we had the three feet of snow. So I like to let the picture speak for its words. They created sight distances. And so I want to work with the DPW to plow the snow properly so that we had during this time, this snow event, the people from Selborn, the seniors from Selborn were walking in the middle of the street. There were piles of snow on the sidewalks. So I would let the people speak instead of just assuming because here's the action. And so as far as the flood that we had, here's a packet that if anybody want to read and get actual facts on, if we are prepared. So please take the time to come see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Lesz?
Thank you. City is well-prepared for snow events. When it does snow and we clear our streets, the city often receives calls from people in Howard County, "When are you coming to do our streets?" Well, unfortunately, we don't go to Howard County. When we have abnormal snowfalls, then it becomes a question of where do you put the snow? And the city makes every effort to get the streets cleared. They encourage businesses to clear their sidewalks. And again, I think the city does an extraordinary job in snow events. As relates to WSSC, they have gotten better over the years in advising the city when they're going to open the floodgates, whether it be one or 10. And the abnormal rainfalls that we've had, I think they've done a good job in making sure that the flooding doesn't take... sure that the flooding doesn't take place in Laurel.
Thank you. We're now ready for question two.
Well, during this, during the rainfall, I'll just make it real quick. The homeless were, there were people that were killed during the rainfall. I'm not blaming the city for it, yes, WSSC, but we have to be more prepared as far as the evacuation, because the evacuation, where the people that were evacuated went all the way to the seniors, the center on Cypress. And as far as the, as far as the snow, we have snow routes that, the snow routes signs are not being adhered to, because during this snowfall, no cars were removed. So to say that we're doing, the city is doing a great job, I have to negate that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Question two. Two large issues Laurel has faced in the last two years is the potential loss of the Mark Train Station and the possible closing of Laurel Regional Hospital. What is your position on each of these issues, and what is your plan for implementing your ideas? And we're going to begin with Mr. Mills.
Thank you. Howard County, right now, they're spending millions. And we have to, as far as the city, now, I don't want, I would be a fool to say that the Mark Train is no good for, for me personally, and for, as far as a business owner on Main Street. It's right down the street from my business. I work hard to keep it, but we can't just talk about keeping it. We have to do something about it. Howard County, right now, is spending millions on the racetrack, on development for, the development for the racetrack, as far as new shopping, new houses, and they have the plans, and it's already in play. The Laurel Park, our advertising, right here on Route 1, northbound and southbound, big billboards that say Laurel Park, better than ever. We're just having yard signs and saying, save the stop. But we have to do something. The only thing that we have to do is parking. And I like to say the parking at the shop, at the town center, if we could possibly, I'll talk furthermore about that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Nicholas, same question. Absolutely. Two large issues Laurel has faced in the last two years is the potential loss of the Mark Train Station and the possible closing of Laurel Regional Hospital. What is your position on each of these issues, and what is your plan for implementing your ideas?
Thank you. The City Council worked very hard to save the Mark Train Station stop. It's my understanding that the stop has been saved and it will not be closed. The second thing is, I currently work at Laurel Regional Hospital. When there was a lot of meetings being held, I had to recuse myself because it was a conflict. However, I work at Laurel Regional Hospital, I provide, I get my healthcare provider from there. I serve as the patient relations, volunteer services, and hospital chaplain. I volunteered there for two years, full-time, before I was hired. Currently, I've been there five years. I will say that the hospital and its services are intact. We have a 24-hour emergency room. It will be transferred over, it will be converted into an ambulatory care center, but the hospital is here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rix.
Well, let me just say that myself and my colleagues are extremely proud that through our efforts, the train station has been saved. A memorandum of understanding was signed on February the 14th of last year, of this year, excuse me. The, as far as the hospital's concerned, to Mayor Moe and Mr. Smalls and a number of other people on this council and their hard work, that hospital will stay there. And as I mentioned in my opening remarks, we also are going to see the whole 47 acres of property over there be developed into a campus, a healthcare campus, that will serve this whole community and take the pressure off of Howard County. As far as the train station also is concerned, we are still working on a committee. I have an 8 o'clock tomorrow morning conference call to deal with this issue.
Thank you. Mr. LeS.
The issue of the Camden Line has been a subject of discussion at National League of Cities on the Transportation Infrastructure and Services Commission that I serve on. It is a difficult issue on the Camden Line because it's owned by CSX, is not considered a passenger line. So the fact that we were able to save the stops at our station and rearrange the existing, what they call "flag stops" to accommodate what the needs will be at, when Laurel Park is developed, that has not been approved. They're, they're in the process of going through all those approvals. It was a real achievement for, for the council persons that worked on that. As far as the hospital, we have saved the hospital, starting two years ago. There were committee meetings, there was an oversight committee meeting recently, and they have moved into UMs from dimensions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Small.
As has been stated, several of us on the council have worked very hard over a long period of time to save our train stop. That has been accomplished through some very hard work and through very dedicated efforts by members of this council. As I stated in my opening statement, I served on the Board of Directors at Laurel Regional Hospital, and I am still involved very closely with the redevelopment of the campus. The hospital is not going anywhere, at least, as been stated, there will be a health and wellness campus that will replace the structure that is currently on site. But this community deserves a train station, and it most definitely deserves high-quality healthcare, and that's what this council is working to give us.
Thank you. Mr. Sidnor.
Yes, I ride the Mark Train every day to work to Washington DC, and I would do everything in my power to work a responsible part, keep that train station open, because like I said, I ride it every day, and I like riding the Mark Train as well. As for the Laurel Hospital, far as my knowledge, that the hospital remained open, University of Maryland, I believe, invested in it, and it's not going to be full capacity, but it will be some services there for our residents here in Laurel. So I will continue to work with the administration and appropriate parties to keep a hospital here in Laurel, because we need first, first, first healthcare here as well. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalt.
I was totally against the downsizing of Laurel Hospital from inception, when it was, I guess, there was, wasn't any announcement. It was surprised upon the legislators and the mayor. In attending the meetings, I was invited after, I guess I caught, I don't know why, I caught the eye of a couple of union reps from 1199 United Health Workers, and they invited me down to speak at three congressional hearings. I guess it's because I was, I've been a resident in the city of Laurel for 32 years and a police officer 28 years, and I guess that gave them a good perspective of why the hospital shouldn't be downsized, and I enjoyed that immensely. I also met with a lot of people from Chestertown who the same thing was going to happen to them. As far as save our stop, I subbed for, I believe it was Karen couldn't make it one time, and I was there with Karen Shembary, and it's amazing how a thousand people can use that stop.
Thank you, sir. Question three. Main Street as a business district has been struggling for many years. What concrete plans to enhance business and attract new growth-type business would you offer? We're going to start with Mr. Sidnor.
Thank you for the question. I've been thinking about the growth of Main Street for a while now. You know, I've been living here, like I said, for 15 years, and I think Main Street is very attractive, so what can I think of? I was thinking about creating a circulate a bus that would connect the community to our commercial amenities, that would give our neighbors here in Laurel a place to shop, dine, work, exercise, and learn without finding difficulties with parking. It also would increase the foot traffic on Main Street, and when people have access, easy access to business, they shop more. It would grow our city treasure, that we have more money to do other things for our youth. So that's one thing that I would create, I would create a circulate a bus route to try to increase some Main Street revenue.
Mr. Mills.
Well, yes, I had a, well, this is one, y'all may have received one of these shirts during Main Street Festival, and it said, "Rede discovered Main Street 2017," with all the businesses on here. And I didn't ask any of the businesses to put a dime to this shirt right here, but it's about us coming together and working together. And there's a new flyer out that says, that came from the city, "Discover Laurel," and they must have liked my idea that was on my shirt. And, but one thing that was not on this flyer was Main Street. And maybe if you look at it a little closer, you know, Main Street is our focus point, but it's on a "Discover Laurel Day" flyer, but it's like a slap to the face of Main Street. Well, I like to add Main Street to this flyer, first of all, and, and, and bring our businesses and bring more businesses besides barber shops and hair salons. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Main Street as a business district has been struggling for many years. What concrete plans to enhance business and attract new growth-type business would you offer?
Since 2011, 70 new businesses have opened on Main Street. Through our economic development programs, we have offered a number of Main Street relocation grants, signage, and other improvements where several businesses have been awarded. We continue to invite applicants to consider moving to Main Street, and it has been very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rix.
Main Street is our blood. I was born on Main Street. We have fought hard, we have our CRA, that, our Community Redevelopment Agency, that works tirelessly on energizing Main Street. We have put a lot of money into Main Street. We will continue to do that. Our, our, our different departments are always geared to look for new, new businesses to go into Main Street. On our Discover Laurel, Main Street is part of that focal point. We want to showcase Laurel, not just one part. We've always been showcasing Laurel. And so we will take those people, and we will show them what we're all, what the fabric of the city is all about. Thank you.
Mr. LeS.
Thank you. If you'll notice, there is, Emory's Art Store is being renovated as we speak. It was bought by people that are on Main Street. They thought it was a good investment, and they're renovating that, and there will soon be additional businesses in that location. As, as Nicholas pointed out, there's been 70 new businesses on Main Street since 2011. There's been 20 grants given for facade and signs. The, the economic development of Main Street is not unique to what's happened around the US. It goes through cycles, and it will continue to go through cycles, and the city will continue to invest in Main Street businesses as the, as the need arises.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeWalt.
As I said earlier, one of my priorities is proactive safety initiatives, and that's, has to deal with Main Street and the seniors and the merchants and the citizens on Main Street. I also had proposed, and I've been voicers about signing a police officer during the day, daywork and evening hours on Main Street. Businesses are going to be more attractive to a, an area like Main Street if they know that the crime rate is low and they know that it's safe, especially when you cross the street. And that's one of the initiatives, that's, that's some of the initiatives that I would propose for it. I'm not a businessman, but I did join the Board of Trade, and I learned a lot from them. And most of the merchants on Main Street complained about the excessive amount of hair salons on Main Street. And when you voice that to the city, that falls upon deaf ears. One of the good things is that they hired Leah Steele, who's doing a fabulous job in getting new businesses to come to Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Small.
Rebuttal, please.
Absolutely. 30 seconds, please.
Well, I'd just like to tell Mr. DeWalt that we have done a lot for Main Street, and we continue to do a lot. You can't tell a business owner that he can't rent to a hair salon. That's up to that person to do that. When they walk in the door and they're offering you a five-year contract, you're not going to let that business stay empty and add to the other ones that we have. You're going to take that contract. It's not our fault that the person rents to a hair salon.
All right.
Rebuttal, please. I didn't say that. I said, "That's the word of the merchants on Main Street, that there's too many hair salons." All I'm doing is relaying the information to the city, and they won't accept that. I also disagree with the parking there, where they're charging the park in that parking area. We don't need those quarters or 50 cents or dollars to allow people to park on Main Street. That's another issue that I have with that parking area.
Thank you, sir.
Rebuttal.
30 seconds, please.
On Main Street, we've also been having a problem with parking and the, the two-hour parking. Just puff out of nowhere, there's been a parking attendant who's been ticketing a lot of people, even business owners, and it, it just came out of nowhere. And we want perhaps to be addressed, like when we address with the message board for Main Street events, you know, hey, two-hour parking is going to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don't park three of your vehicles down there and take up all the parking spaces, and then you won't have a problem.
Okay, we're going to move, and we're going to give Mr. Small's. We have had one round of rebuttals for you. We'd like to give that one round of rebuttal for each candidate, if you could. We have several more questions and questions from our constituents to get to, so if I could exercise moderator privilege. Thank you. So I want to give Mr. Small's an opportunity to respond to the question. You need me to repeat the question, sir?
No, I think we've talked enough that I don't have any problem knowing what the question is. I'm very proud of the programs and investments that the city has made in, in, in Main Street. It's, it's a work in progress, and I think any viable Main Street anywhere in the country has gone through some of the ebbs and flows that our Main Street has gone through. I'm proud of the association that the city has with our Board of Trade and with many of our merchants on Main Street. The city has put into place a number of, of programs that are designed to help businesses relocate or improve their facades and a number of other things, as was stated by one of my colleagues, that have been a number of businesses that have taken advantage of those programs. We are constantly reevaluating those programs and making improvements so that the offerings will attract more business owners.
Thank you. Our next question. As the metropolitan area has grown, the impacts of traffic on Route 1 and Main Street have had a huge effect on our area. Pedestrians are often at risk. What ideas or changes might you implement to help relieve or control the situation? And we're going to start with Mr. DeWalt.
I don't, I'm not privy to a lot of the things that the Team Laurel is since they've been here for such a long period of time. So my information as far as directing traffic in different areas and things like that, I wouldn't be very knowledgeable about it. But I'm assured, if I am elected, I would become more knowledgeable about the traffic aspects of it, because I would have a better understanding of it. But I really can't give an educated opinion on, I know traffic is bad, I know pedestrian safety is at risk on Main Street, I know there's a lot of speeding vehicles on Main Street, things like that, that come into our city. But as far as enforcement in the city, I would know what to do, but as far as the flow, ebb and flow of traffic around our area to ease up the congestion, I wouldn't be privy to that information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sidnor.
Yes, Ms. Mari, can you repeat that question for me, please?
Certainly. As the metropolitan area has grown, the impacts of traffic on Route 1 and Main Street have had a huge effect on our area. Pedestrians are at risk, are often at risk. What ideas or changes might you implement to help control or relieve the situation?
First, I definitely want to make our, make sure our citizens are safely crossing the street, so that's paramount to me. I don't have enough knowledge as well on the congestion of it, though, but I believe that the circulate a bus that I mentioned earlier, that will relieve some, some traffic, and people don't have to drive to the place they need to go to, like LA Fitness, or the Laurel Library, or Main Street. They can get on that circulate a bus, and they can drop them off, and so I would definitely want to invest in that. And like I said, I'm assessing the city more to give more information. more to get more information, but pedestrians are at risk, I definitely want to get on that heavy as soon as I get elected.
Thank you. Mr. Mills.
Thank you. I wanted, Carl, you do have some information, and, uh, you said it, and that information is having the police on Main Street. There's been people in different areas here in the city that has been killed as, as being, walking just across the street. One of the reasons why I wanted to move right here in Laurel, was when I walked across the street right there on Main Street, people stopped for you, and I, and I really love that about, about Main Street and about Laurel. We just need people to, people to stop at stop signs. A lot of people are driving through stop signs. Just the other day, uh, there was a pedestrian just right at Fourth and Main Street that got hit on a bike, riding down the street, and somebody ran through the stop sign and hit him, and thank God he didn't get killed. But we need to have the police force on Main Street. If we have to pay more, pay a more, a little more attention to these stop signs, please let us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Nicholas.
Yes, thank you. Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. As the metropolitan area has grown, the impacts of traffic on Route One and Main Street have had a huge effect on our area. Pedestrians are often at risk. What ideas or changes might you implement to, um, relieve or control the situation?
Thank you. Uh, pedestrian safety is very important to us, is a paramount concern. Um, on Main Street, we have installed two crosswalks, one down by, by, um, the highs in front of Selborn House, and then one down by the post office. There's another one that's up by to the Petro Center, and we're looking at other areas in the city to put those crosswalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls.
I think, as most of us know, Route One is managed and maintained by State Highway. Um, Route One has been dubbed, excuse me, America's Main Street. It runs this way and that way, and, um, east, west, north, south. But, um, a lot of pass-through traffic, uh, passing through Laurel, uh, travels on, on Route One. So we have worked collaboratively with State Highway Administration to, to, uh, work to control the flow of traffic. Our city's growing, uh, and let's face it, I think we all realize that, uh, there are more cars on the road than there were five years ago even. Uh, so it's, it's a real challenge, not only for the city, but also for State Highway, to manage and control safely, uh, their traffic.
Thank you, sir. You're now going to ask Mr. Les to respond.
The, the issue of, uh, traffic in Laurel, one of the keys is the pass-through traffic. The traffic coming on 216, the traffic on 198, 197. The, in dealing with that, you need a regional approach to, to, uh, to trying to control the traffic. I mean, we have a situation now where we have traffic signals that are not sequenced, they're not hooked together. So often, you'll get a blinking red light on Route One, because the traffic signal's not working, and then it's just, the traffic backs up on 198, Route One, or you get an accident on 95 and traffic is rerouted into Laurel. That happens often. Um, but again, working collaboratively with the, uh, with the counties, Howard County and Prince George's County State Highway, uh, I think there will be improvements made over time, but we need to recognize that a large amount of the traffic patterns are caused by tra, pass-through traffic.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks.
As I've mentioned earlier, um, tomorrow morning, we have a conference call at 8:00 AM with the State Highway Administration, and by working with them, um, we are, we've been notified that the roads go through, both ways going through Laurel, that the State Highway is going to start to repave those roadways. The other thing that we're looking at is $5.6 million of new traffic signal modifications that are slated to be done in and around Laurel, uh, by way of the new racetrack development. When that's going to be done, I'm not sure. We will be notified in advance, and most, we would, most likely get everybody notified about that happening, but if we don't stay involved with the state, then we may lose that, so we are very vigilant about that particular situation, and we will continue to work with them collaboratively.
Thank you. Ready for question five?
I'd like to rebuttal.
Thirty seconds, please.
With the new traffic information that Mr. Ricks just spoke about, about the Laurel Racetrack Parking Lot, uh, well, about the Mark Train, they're increasing and adding more stops, they're spending money. Like I said earlier, they're spending money. That's Howard County and the State Highway Administration and Mark Train, but the city, we have to do something in order, if the ridership goes over to Howard County, we lose the Mark Train. All we have to do is find parking, one thing that needs to be done that has not been done, and I, I wish to bring that change.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
The Laurel Town Center has been a great improvement over the final years of the previous mall. How can the city keep the success rate moving forward by attracting new anchor stores and more varied businesses? We're going to start with Mr. Smalls.
The Town Center was one of those long-awaited projects, um, that has, has finally, uh, come to fruition. The city is continuing with efforts to, um, bring interest to that Town Center, as well as other areas where there are, commercial areas where there are vacant storefronts. I think we all are, are pretty much aware that, uh, the, the, uh, the, the retail is where I'm, retail has changed. A lot of people are, are doing all of their retail shopping online, uh, and so that's caused, uh, a lot of brick-and-mortar establishments not to open, because they realize more profits from, from doing online sales. But we are working with the owners of the Town Center, uh, to incentivize.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks.
Yes. I, I think what Mr. Smalls just said is absolutely true. There, uh, when you see stores like Macy's and, um, some of the other sports stores and those kinds of brick-and-mortar, it's going to be very difficult, but we're in it to win it. We're not going to go away. We're going to continue to fight to bring people in. We try to bring in restaurants, uh, we are, uh, in the old Safeway store, for example, uh, we have split, we're going to split that store, one half is going to be an Aldi's, and the other half is going to be a sports store. So it's not something that we sit around on our Laurels, but we are in it, and we will fill these stores up with something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Les.
The, uh, the mall, the demise of the mall was a 10-year period. What people didn't realize was the mall was owned by one company, Samara, and Montgomery Ward, that end was owned by a family. And through the efforts of the mayor and some of the council members on this podium, we were able to bring those people together, and they were able to, one soul to the other, so they could consolidate the property and, in fact, build the Town Center. Now, the, the closing of stores in these retail centers is dependent upon what the business model looks like. I mean, Sports Authority closing was all of a sudden, we didn't know that was going to happen, but the owners, it's not in their best interest for the storefront to stay vacant, so the city will do whatever it has to do to help them attract new businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Mills.
Yes, thank you. Well, as a business owner, uh, I, I think we all remember this saying, uh, if you build it, they'll come. Well, they built it, and the stores came, but they're leaving, because, again, people are spending online. Well, let's think, as the, uh, new generation says, we got to think like how they think. We got, we got to stop thinking old time and, and start thinking new. Well, if the Amazons, the Walmarts, if these companies are striving, then we have to target those companies, and instead of splitting the building, because Amazon is huge, we have to invite them and Walmart to possibly come right here. Uh, I think everybody in here probably has been to Walmart and ordered from Amazon, so if we bring these businesses and invite them, and maybe some type of tax credit to them, and we bring them here, we stay striving. Thank you.
Rebuttal, rebuttal. Uh, I think it's really important that everyone understands that the city doesn't own nor does it negotiate with businesses. That's the job of the developer or the property owner. Uh, we work with the developer, uh, but we don't have a real say in what businesses open in a particular, uh, uh, center. So I, I just wanted to point that out to make sure that, you know, you can't lay it squarely just on the city.
Thank you, sir.
Rebuttal.
You, I'm not saying that the city has that authority, but you, but you have a flyer that's, that's going out, Discover Laurel Day, and so it might not be these four here, but there's an economic develop, develop, uh, developer here in this, in, in this building here that has that job, and we have to share these ideas, just like, just as I shared this idea with this T-shirt, and then they came up with the idea of Discover Laurel Day. Well, that's that idea. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Nicholas, it's your turn.
Thank you. In addition to what my council colleagues have already said, we do offer the relocation, we've extended the relocation grants to other parts of the city to attract new businesses. I often go to the Laurel Town Center, and it's pretty crowded, because it's very hard to find a parking space, but we're very open to new businesses, and we're always looking for new, looking for new businesses and offering these grant incentives. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalt.
Um, being a member of the Board of Trade, their motto is, um, small businesses, big ideas. And, um, with the events that they put on each year, which is a lot of events that draw a lot of people to the, uh, Main Street area, uh, the River Fest, the Main Street Festival, almost 100,000 people at the, uh, Main Street Festival, the Trick or Treat on Main Street, um, Second Saturday, there's so many, Back to School Jam, and that's just in one year's time, and there's a lot of planning, and I know there's a lot of networking, but when people come to those events, and you get that amount of people there, and they see what they do in the city of Laurel, it does attract a lot, a lot of, uh, business owners and things like that, that see how orderly it is and how well it's, uh, how well it's projected out there, and the amount of people and enthusiasm that's, uh, at these events.
Thank you. And Mr. Sidnor.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, I'll start like a, reach out like a petition or something, not really a petition, but like a sign-up sheet or something, find out what kind of business we want to grow into the city, because the community wants to, these businesses, so what do they want? And there's a lot of stuff we have to do, though, but we can get the name of some businesses and get the city administration and developers in some way, communicate that, and try to grow these businesses to our city. So I think that's one step, you know, find out what business we, we want to bring into our city. That's what I would do first.
Thank you. Next question. How is the city doing? What is doing well for the community? What is it doing well for the community? And what do you see are the city's unresolved problems? And we are going to start with Mr. Les.
Well, the city's doing well. Uh, I have, people ask me, "How are we doing?" We're in the black. We have an even budget, we don't have tax increases, property values are increasing, uh, storefronts along, uh, Main Street and in the shopping centers are being re-leased. Uh, so the city's doing well. Unresolved issues, traffic, we've already talked about that. Um, there's been a complaint about, uh, the type of housing that's being built. Uh, it's interesting to note that townhouses, I mean, apartments are all rented in Laurel, it's almost impossible to find one. So again, you build what the public demands, and that's what you, what you market. So again, while we do have a traffic issue, we need to keep working on that.
Thank you. Mr. Small.
I agree with Councilman Les, the city is doing well. Uh, we have a $32 million budget, uh, and I think with that, the city services, that we're providing the enhanced services in many cases, uh, that are being provided to the city, uh, help speak to, to that. The city is growing, uh, it's, it's growing by leaps and bounds. There are a number of efforts that have been made, uh, that are presently in place, that are designed to help improve the quality of life for residents in our city. For example, uh, many of our parks now have free Wi-Fi, uh, so that anyone going to the parks can enjoy pulling out their smartphones or other devices and connecting to the internet. Those are the kind of things that smart cities, uh, do, and Laurel is positively a smart city.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks.
I think we're, I think we're constantly aware of our infrastructure and our economic development programs that we have here in the city, and we even went as far as to develop a, an over, um, a revitalization overlay that would help us to take the, all the older part of town and some of the other areas, and actually focus on those and develop them in such a way that we revitalize those particular areas, and we've also taken part of that overlay all the way down to 198, and we're looking to take it even further down Route One, and to have that be part of our structure that really works well for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidnor.
Um, yes, like I said, I think the city's, I think the city's doing very well. I've been here for 15 years, and I watched the city grow, and, uh, I'll just continue to involve the citizens in this decision-making process, we can make the city better.
Thank you. Mr. DeWalt, how is the city doing, and what do you see are the city's unresolved problems?
You didn't expect me to say everything's going well, did you?
I thought you meant...
One other thing I'd like to mention, I don't think the city's being aggressive enough on taking care of our homeless. In order to get people from being homeless back into, from not being homeless, is providing shelter and getting them jobs. And, uh, with all this development that's going on in the city, and then we have another 450 housing units going down in Patuxent Greens, I think that they should come up with what Howard County has proposed and has implemented is SEAs, which is Single Efficiency Apartments. Make, make these developers, uh, make them as part of their contracts or whatever, build these self, uh, Single Efficiency Apartments for our homeless, just so we could get them out of the woods and off the street into something viable to live on, live with, and, and communicate with Lars to get the funding for it.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. How is the city doing? What is the city doing well for the community, and what do you see, uh, are the city's unresolved problems?
Uh, one of the things that I'm very proud of is our senior programs. We have over, we have 185 seniors that have signed up for programs in 2016. There were 555 seniors that participated in the various city programs that we have in, in, in the community. Um, one of the other things is the youth services. Uh, we offer a lot of programs for youth services. We created the Youth Services Commission, we have the Youth Bureau, where we're offering counseling for, um, teenagers. Um, I think we're doing great. I do think there's an issue with homelessness. Um, as most of you all know, I prepare and serve food every day for the homeless, I have a food pantry in my home, and I will say that there is more need than there is funding. Um, I've worked with Lars, um, I work closely with the Prince George's Department of Social Services, and I think it's, it's a problem for every municipality. Um, at the federal level, I know a lot of funding is being cut, um, the shelters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mills.
Well, I'd like to piggyback on what, I always call them captain, um, that's the relationship that me and Carl has, but I like to say that we have to do more as far as helping the homeless, and, should I pause? And I, and I, what I would like to do, I can't speak on the budget, because I'm not, I wish to be in, in, inside the City Hall, um, so I won't speak about the budget, but I'll speak about the real Team Laurel, who are, who are us, and I am helping over 3,000 CDL Book Club members that I train to become millionaires and to be able to afford to live here.
members that I train to become millionaires and to be able to afford to live here. So, that's the thing that I've been doing, is helping the city. And the city is us. Without us, these buildings will crumble. So, the city is us, and that's who I'm helping, and that's what we need to do. And that's what I'm doing, and that's what I will continue to do, is help the city, who are us, the real team Laurel.
Thank you. Next question.
Rebuttal, just a little bit. Mr. DeWalt has to understand, and I agree with him, we have a problem, first of all. But when you're working with developers, you have to be very careful, because sometimes you do things or say things, and it's against the law, and you just can't twist their arm and make them give you things that's completely different than what you are being proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's a developer right here that has a very good relationship with these four. And as you see, a lot of development being built around here, it's only been just a handful of people. And so, maybe we'd like to open up a little more developers to come in, and perhaps instead of having the same developers, one in particular, that's Legend Group, and we need to open up a little more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, 30 seconds.
Suggesting that I would strong-arm someone or force somebody to do something that they didn't want to do is absolutely ridiculous and absurd. It's putting into a contract with a con-
Carl, I want to guess in-
Wait till I'm finished, wait till I'm finished.
Allow him to finish, please, sir.
Please. When you put into a contract, when you go with a developer, you put in there about it's required that you build so many single-efficiency apartments. It's not a hard thing to do. Hired County has done it, and they're very successful. But to take that into the fact that I'm going to strong-arm someone or do something illegally is absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
That's not what I was getting at. I'm just speaking-
That's what you said.
Yes, one time.
I take it back.
Time. Thank you. Additional rebuttal from anyone who has not rebutted yet. If not, we will move.
I do want to, I do want to-
Yes, 30 seconds, please.
Mr. Mills. The city has a planning commission. That planning commission is made up of citizens. So, to say that there are a handful of developers who always are developing in the city is not an accurate statement by any stretch. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. So, moving on to our next question. What are the key challenges or opportunities you believe we will face in the city in the next two years? Key challenges or opportunities we will face in the city in the next two years. We will start with Mr. Ricks.
I think that one of the things that we have to be cognizant of is the opioid problems that are facing the state of Maryland. I know our police department is very aggressive about watching out for those types of trends, but I think that the way it's going now is certainly a possibility that it'll get hit here in this particular area, since we sit between Baltimore and Washington. I think development is, and controlled development is something we have to be vigilant about. We don't need any more apartments. I think we do need senior housing, and I believe that that's something that we've got to work on more vigilantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Les?
The, one of the challenges facing the city is, and it faces most cities of our size, is the ability to maintain the ambiance and the environment of safety that continues to attract people. And as I said, traffic is an issue. The opioid crisis is a problem throughout the United States, but it is a problem here in the city. We have a very diligent drug unit within the police department that spends a lot of time trying to keep the drugs off the street, and they do a good job. But those cases take a long time to develop and gel so that they can make arrests. And I think that's something that gets lost on most people. They see something, and they want something to happen right away. So, again, I think there's challenges, but maintaining the ambiance and the environment of safety is a challenge over the next two years.
Thank you. Mr. Small?
I agree with Councilman Ricks and Councilman Les regarding the opioid epidemic. I was recently appointed to a Maryland Municipal League Committee, Hometown Emergency Preparedness Committee, that is taking on the opioid issue as a league representing 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland. Opportunities, I think, from a practical point of view, we should look very closely at possible opportunities in medical marijuana. We have, as a council, passed some initial legislation that helps sort of open the door for that. And challenges, again, speed, traffic, and, you know, I think those are some issues that we definitely have to continue dealing with.
Thank you. Mr. DeWalt?
From the beginning, I said one of my priorities would be proactive safety initiatives, which is keeping the city safe would be number one for me always. I guess it's because of my experience as a police officer. But the opioid epidemic, which has killed 200,000 people nationwide, in Maryland alone, from January to March, we lost 550 people with drug and alcohol overdoses, including 372 fentanyl-related deaths. Education, treatment, and enforcement, education with the high schools, mainly the high schools and the junior high schools, although I don't think we have junior high schools in Laurel, in the city. But we do have two high schools in the city. The treatment centers along Main Street, make sure they're fully funded, because you definitely need treatment and enforcement. There's a sheriff's department with enforcement that's charging drug dealers with fentanyl-laced heroin, second-degree murder charges on that.
Thank you. Mr. Sidnor?
Yes, I believe traffic is a big problem for us in the next two years. Also, as the city is growing, the people have been living here for a long time. It might be too expensive for them to stay here. So, I think those might be some key challenges, the traffic and the cost of living in Laurel for housing.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yes, the opioid is definitely a problem. So, instead of me just talking about the situation, I'm doing something about the situation. And I've helped over 3,000 of our Marylanders and the city of Laurel citizens, the real team Laurel, to say no to drugs by obtaining a commercial driver's license, and they have to pass a drug test. So, drugs and alcohol are major. The traffic, if there are, people are on cell phones, they are using drugs behind the wheel. I see them all the time, because I'm up in these trucks. And we have to, we have to help our neighbors say no to drugs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas.
Thank you. I, too, working in healthcare, I see that the opioid epidemic is a big problem. I know that the Hogan administration is implementing some state programs that will come to these, to all of the municipalities. I think traffic is an issue, and I also think that the community policing is very important to combat our neighborhood crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Some businesses on Main Street have parking challenges. The Community Redevelopment Authority, also known as the CRA, has a parking lot near Sixth Street that charges a fee during business hours in order to cover the parking lot maintenance fees. Is your position to continue this practice, or do you have some different ideas on how to pay for the parking lot maintenance fees? And we will start with Ms. Nicholas.
Thank you. We can look at other options to cover fees. I do know after the, I believe it's the six o'clock hour, it's free of charge. But we can look at, we can always look at our budget and look at other options to make it free. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalt?
No, there shouldn't be no fees to park on Main Street. They make, the city makes millions and millions of dollars each year on speed camera tickets. Now, I know that money can only be used for equipment and education, safety equipment and education. But when you're charging a quarter, 50 cents, 75 cents to park on Main Street, it deters people from parking there. You have a parking enforcement officer, and you have park, police officers that can check that parking lot periodically to make sure people are not abusing that privilege. But any sort of fees for parking on Main Street, I think, is a big deterrent to the Main Street merchants in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Sidnor?
Yes, I don't support any parking on Main Street, paying for parking on Main Street as well. I want to go back to the initial idea I had about creating a circulate bus that would go around the city and pick people up, drop you off at shop on Main Street, drop you off at library. This is very important, so that's what I would like to have, a circulate bus, and no parking fees on Main Street.
Mr. Small?
I do think it's worth taking a look at our budget, looking at our revenue versus expenditures, and seeing where there may be the opportunity to very closely examine if it's prudent or not to charge, and how we can defer the maintenance costs into other areas.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks?
I was not really in favor of it to begin with. I thought that it shouldn't have been there, but I think since the administration did put it there, I think we've got to take a look at it and see what, if anything, we can do to alleviate that.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yes, the, well, I was glad you brought that question back. Mr. Ricks spoke about three cars being on Main Street. But I'd like to speak about those cars that's being used, that I use. They actually, you've probably seen them. They have all the different businesses. Those businesses that are on those yellow cars actually are businesses on Main Street, and they didn't pay not one dime to be on that car. That's what, and just as this shirt, they didn't pay not one dime. This is what we're doing. But as far as parking, I actually have my own parking, and we park in the back of the parking lot. And as far as paying for parking, we have to find another way. But as far as parking, we need a bigger parking lot for the Mark train to save our stop. So, if we can find some money to save our stop, then that's what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Les?
The issue of whether people should pay to park on the new parking lot next to the liquor store on Main Street, it deserves another look. But let me just address something. It's been said that we need more parking for the Mark station. What people don't realize is the city of Laurel does not own that property. That property is owned by the state of Maryland, by the Department of Transportation. And the city has made every effort to convince the Department of Transportation to provide a developer, to provide more parking and some businesses on those properties. But we don't own the property. It's, again, a situation, it's catch-22. It's called transit-oriented development, and the state of Maryland taxpayer has paid for that property. We do, in fact, have parking at the Legion, and the city, in fact, has, in fact, in the past, paid for resurfacing that parking lot.
Thank you. Absolutely. So, we are going to move to audience questions. We've received two questions so far, and I'll start with the first. Over the past decade, rental and housing costs have risen significantly in the city of Laurel. Many previously affordable options have been rehabbed, and others have been demolished and replaced with luxury apartments, pricing out many young people, those with fixed incomes, and those working in our vibrant service sector. How do you see supporting those on the lower rungs of the economic ladder to remain in our community? How can we encourage affordable housing options? And I'm going to start with Mr. Mills.
The affordable housing has not, has not been in Laurel. Where a lot of people are being pushed out of Laurel, and I saw that along with the drug situation. I saw that as a situation, and I took initiative to, let me just say, my dad brought me up. He said, "When you see a problem, you have the power to solve that problem." So, what I did was, I'm going out, and I'm talking to people, and I'm trying to find out who needs that help. And those who call me and they ask for the help, I provide them with the help so that they can increase their lifestyle, basically. And like I said, over 3,000 Marylanders and citizens right here, the real team Laurel, I've helped them basically become millionaires. And so, all you do is just go to my Facebook page, you'll see it. And so, they are being able to afford now to stay in Laurel. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Over the past decade, rental and housing costs have risen significantly in the city of Laurel. Many previously affordable options have been rehabbed, and others have been demolished and replaced with luxury apartments, pricing out many young people, those on fixed incomes, and those working in our vibrant public sector or service sector. How do you see supporting those on the lower rungs of the economic ladder to remain in our community? How can we encourage affordable housing options?
Thank you. Currently, there are three apartment developments here in Laurel that are a part of our affordable housing programs. It's the Evolution Town Center, Madera, Westside, and Avalon Laurel. I do know that as I work with people in the community, some people are on fixed incomes, and some people don't meet the salary requirements. We have social service programs that do provide aid. They help people with their first month's rent or security deposits, such as Lars. And I know the Department of Social Services does it well, does as well. We're just looking at ways to make sure that when new developers come, there is affordable housing for our residents to be able to move there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks?
It's a very difficult question. One of the developments that we did, we did, that was done here in Laurel is C Street Flats. They're small efficiency apartments, and they're full. We've encouraged that developer to build more, and we're hoping that we give him the resources to do that. But for now, it's like a success story. We made the town what it is and built the parameters, and it has pushed some people out. So, we will continue to work through our economic development programs to see what we can do to bring more housing in that is affordable to young people.
Thank you. Mr. Les?
Now, my wife is frowning at me. I think she wanted me to be one of those CDL drivers so we could be millionaires.
Come on, Mike.
I'm being honest with you. Okay, but let me just say this about housing. What drives the housing market is the cost of money, the $48,000 per unit that you have to pay the county to put a unit in place. That's why somebody said, "Why did so-and-so tear down their apartments and build, replace them with upscale, because they didn't have to pay the $48,000 for each one of those units?" It's $48,000 to get something out of the ground right now. So, again, we need to understand there's an economic issue that has to be dealt with. We do have, in fact, workforce housing, as Ms. Nicholas has pointed out. And again, those numbers are set by the county of who qualifies and who doesn't. But again, it's an issue that we need to deal with, and the city is trying to deal with it.
Thank you. Mr. Small?
It's already been stated that the city has and has had for some time an affordable housing program. That program's intended to assist the young people of modest means, and the public sector, employees who are in those moderate income ranges, as well as seniors who are approaching retirement, who wish to live in the city. Certainly, I think we may want to take a closer look at the program. I think part of it may be that the program is not very well-publicized. So, I have no numbers right now of how many people have applied under this program. But I think it's something that we should take a closer look at, and where there are modifications to be made to the program, we should take that under for serious consideration.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes, yes. I have the developers set aside a number of units of affordable housing. Developers' whole purpose is to make money. I understand that. But they can enter a community of benefit agreement with the city to set a set of units besides, for people to afford they can stay in the city. So, that's what I would do with the developers.
Mr. DeWalt?
I wasn't aware of the three apartment complexes or building-
Um, I wasn't aware of the three apartment complexes or, um, building that had that either. So I don't think it's very well-publicized either when it should be. Um, if we could get three developers to build that type of housing, why don't we try to even get more? Because we have another victim of the, um, inflation or teardown coming at 8th and Montgomery. They've got their eviction notices to be out by December 31st of this year. So that'll be displacing some, even some more people. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that when those apartments go in there, they're going to be high-rent apartments, especially the ones at the Town Center when we were told they start off at $2,600 a month. So if we have three right now, I would love to read about them if it's advertised a little bit more. I would love to read about the aspects of those three developments and what the costs are for those. And if we could continue that with other developers, that would be fabulous for people around here.
Okay, thank you.
The affordable housing program is actually on our website, and it's under the Economic and Community Development Department. The, all of the information is there. Thank you.
Our next audience question. It is important for everyone to do their part to protect our natural resources. How will you enable Laurel to be a model community in protecting the environment, including action against climate change? And we're going to start with Mr. Sidnor.
And thank you for the question. Um, I recycle all the time. So the first thing we do, we had to inform the city, train the city, our residents on recycling, and that's the best thing I can come up with right now. I do more knowledge and research. I can come up with some other things, but right now, that's all I know. We can just recycle things, go forward from here.
Mr. Mills.
Sure. It is important for everyone to do their part to protect our natural resources. How will you enable Laurel to be a model community in protecting the environment, including action against climate change?
Well, we have, one, we have to worry about the, the river, um, because it's a flood area. And as far as making sure that the river is, is clear. Um, and that's just not clear of the brush and debris, but, well, brush, but we have to make sure that debris is, is removed. Uh, we all have to do our part, and that is making sure that we're not littering, littering on our streets. Um, when DPW and the State Highway cut the grass, they have to cut the grass and not blowing the grass in the street because that grass builds up in the gullyways, and it causes more water to brush out onto the roads. It makes it an unsafe place, so we have to possibly do that. Thank you.
Ms. Nicholas.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. It is important for everyone to do their part to protect our natural resources. How will you enable Laurel to be a model community in protecting the environment, including action against climate change?
I believe that trash affects the environment. I know that there are two communities that have the cleanup. There's one on Montgomery Street, Prince George's Street. I actually started the cleanup when I lived over in the Patuxent area. I think that's very important for trash pickup in the environment, and I also think, um, commuting more so than, um, driving because it cuts down on the air pollution and carpooling and things of that sort would be a great start. That's not an end-all, be-all, but it's certainly a start. Thank you.
Mr. Ricks.
Where do I start? The city of Laurel just finished up, and we do it twice a year. We do a recycling program for not only electronics, but also for paper. We also run a recycling program. It comes to my house every Friday, picks up all the recyclables that I have accumulated. And we have, um, we work with Prince George's County on making sure that the water at the Laurel Lakes is, is clear at all times when we're working over there to make it better, environmentally friendly. Um, the city does a lot to make sure that the environment is perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Les.
Yeah, the, uh, city of Laurel was the first one in Prince George's County to have a recycling program. It's been successful. Uh, over time, we've gone from just residences to including apartments and some businesses. The, the second thing has to do with the water resources we have. The, um, the Patuxent River, uh, the Patuxent River Commission, of which I chair, uh, has been very diligent in, in working with various counties and cities along the river for seven counties, uh, to ensure that that water resource in fact, uh, gets better, and it is getting better. We get a score every year. And finally, Laurel Lakes, working with Mary Lehman, we were finally able to get the upper lake cleared. And hopefully, uh, we've got some discussions going on to get the second lake, the bottom lake cleared of silt. And that goes a long way to keeping the waters pure rolling downstream.
Thank you. Mr. Dewalt.
I'm a proud member of the, uh, Old Town Laurel Cleanup Crew, and we've been in existence. Kathy Peterson started it about three years ago. And we go around and we pick up trash, and it would be nice to see if the city would adopt that principle in getting every member of our community to join these cleanup crews and keeping our city clean. I think some of the areas, uh, we need a few more garbage cans strategically put around certain areas, especially around the schools and things like that. But as often as we do it, it is a mess when you go out there the next time to pick up that trash. Um, also, the advertising of the, uh, recycling is huge, and keeping those bins, especially the large bins, because a lot of the small bins get filled very quickly. But the advertising of it is, uh, very, very important. I also believe a trolley on Main Street would help in the parking and for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls.
Uh, some of you may know that the, uh, fountains in the, the two lakes are not just aesthetically pleasing, but they, uh, help aerate, uh, the lake. Uh, that helps reduce the turbidity. That's the particulate matter that floats that helps discolor, uh, the waters. Uh, so that's, that's just one effort that, um, that the city has, has taken. The, the city has, um, responsibility for maintaining the grounds around the lake, but not the waters of the lake. But we've, we've taken the initiative to do those kinds of things. Also, the city has been recognized statewide as a Maryland-certified, uh, city for its stewardship, uh, and environmental, as, in, as its environmental stewardship. Uh, and I chaired, um, uh, a, uh, environmental committee with the National League of Cities.
Thank you. Another-
The border, please.
Sure. 30 seconds, please.
Yes. I, I just was listening to what everybody said and the, and I noticed that no one said anything about the traffic. When you're talking about ki, climate change, you're talking about traffic, um, the, the fumes that come from vehicles. Uh, when we make sure that in the, in the commercial driver license, we make sure that all our vehicles are, the, they use a certain amount of fuel, what is called depth, to make sure that the environment is being protected. And so it's about the vehicles, it's about the infrastructure that these vehicles are releasing, and it's not just about trash.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Hunter, may I just add one thing to what we also do here in Laurel? I think this is our 25th year of being a tree city, and we've recently given away about 115 trees for the neighbors to plant. So we are very much, um, in favor of those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our, we have another question from the audience. Since the election last fall, there has been a ground swell of grassroots activism. In your opinion, what is the best way for citizens to get involved with the city to move it forward in a progressive, powerful, and effective manner? Mr. Dewalt, let's start with you.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Since the election last fall, there has been a ground swell of grassroots activism. In your opinion, what is the best way for citizens to get involved with the city to move it forward in a progressive, powerful, and effective manner?
It, it depends on how you want to get involved with the city. If, uh, if you're looking at getting into politics, it's very, very difficult because we have, uh, uh, we have a Team Laurel you have to go up against. And if you look at the years of service they have on this team, it's, it's a lot of years. And to get involved, to try to get involved in politics and change anything, it's very, very difficult because they have such a ingrained grip on our community and our, uh, our, 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 in the city hall itself. That's what I'm trying to do, and it's very, very difficult. It's a lot of work. And, but it's the best way that I feel that people could get involved with this city is to get involved with the politic part of it, because we need a change, we need a change in this community, and we need to get the city back to the people, not in a specific team making all these decisions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sidnor.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's why I decided to run, to bring ordinary people to the same table, and we create better ideas and solutions. Being active is very important to me. Politics is what we got to do. Be involved in local politics, be engaged, you know, that's our constitutional right to protest and stand up for things. So I'm all in favor of people advocating for things as social changes. So, uh, yes, I have no problem with that.
Mr. Mills.
Yes. Well, if y'all would look at the, our Laurel's, the shield, the logo, it's a triangle. If you look at that triangle, it represents the, the tri-counties. And inside that triangle, there are two hands shaking, and one is white and one is black. And they're shaking and they're working together, and that's what we have to do. Laurel has become a very diverse community, and we have to, it's a bad day that you can go two doors down from your house and not know your neighbor. It's a bad day, and we have to bring some change here in order to, because I tell you this. When so, if something happens, we're going to want to know who your neighbor is. You're going to want to know who your neighbor is, and your neighbor is a part of the real team Laurel. Not just four people, but it's us that have to work together. So that's my thing. We have to work together, and that's what I'm bringing about, change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Since the last, I mean, since the election last fall, there has been a ground swell of grassroots activism. In your opinion, what is the best way for citizens to get involved with the city to move it forward in a progressive, powerful, and effective manner?
Thank you. I, I embrace social change. I work with a number of grassroots communities as it relates to homeless issues and other issues. Uh, I would invite anyone to, they can come to city council meetings, they can come to work sessions, they can call any of us here on the council, the mayor's office, if they'd like to schedule meetings and set up meetings and things of that sort. But I, I embrace change, and I would be very open to hearing new ideas and innovative ways. Thank you.
Mr. Smalls.
Uh, first of all, Team Laurel has been in place because of you. You voted us in place. We didn't take over city hall. And, and that's what we're working to, to continue to provide the support and services, uh, that we have in the time that we've been in office. So it's you who decide how long any of us, uh, as elected, uh, people stay in office. Uh, for the grassroots activism, I can say in a word, volunteer. The city has a number of citizen advisory committees, uh, volunteer. That's where I started, and that's where a number of other folks, uh, who have come before me and surely will come after me, will start volunteering to serve the city.
Thank you. Mr. Les.
Thank you. I just want to, if, somebody said, geez, you, you know, you've been a politician for 21 years. Yeah, but I spent 17 years on the Planning Commission before that. And before that, I was on the Master Plan Review Committee, and I, I chaired the first group looking at senior citizen housing for the city of Laurel, because we didn't have any provisions for it. So again, you have to volunteer, and, and that's in addition to what I was doing in the, in my children's school. Volunteer. The mayor, the mayor always says, call his office and volunteer. He's always looking for volunteers. And I, I think that, you know, jumping up and saying, geez, I want to start as a politician. That's not how most of the people that are currently in positions as elected officials in Laurel got started.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks.
Thank you. I, I think that we've all spoken pretty closely about this thing. I think the fabric of Laurel, going back for years, has all been, always been made up of volunteers. So beside the city, the fire department, the rescue squad, the Rotary Clubs, the Lions Clubs, all these people have helped make the city what it is today. But also, you want to get involved and learn about the, what the fabric of city hall is. You have to volunteer. You have to get on a committee, whether it's a budget committee, or election committee, or planning committee, or something like that. There's where you get to understand what it's all about. You don't get to understand it when you get elected here. It takes you two to four years for you to get a clear understanding of what your job is.
Thank you. So this concludes our questions for this evening. I want to thank all of the candidates for your participation, and now we are going to move to your closing statements. And we began with candidate one, um, to start with, so we're going to reverse that and begin with candidate number seven. Lucky seven, Mr. Les. So two minutes.
I don't know about lucky seven. I'm still looking for that million dollars. But that's okay. Let me just be brief, okay? It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you, the citizens of Laurel. My phone number is every week on television camera. It rings in our house because it's a landline that we've had for 40 years. Just don't call after 11 o'clock because my wife turns into a pumpkin. Okay? I look forward to continuing in that service as we move the city forward and commit to giving my all in that effort. I'm asking for your vote, and again, thank you to the Laurel Board of Trade for hosting this candidate's forum, and see you at the polls.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ricks.
I want to again thank you, Ms. Hunter, and, uh, I want to thank the Laurel Board of Trade, everyone else that's come out. I think that we have done a pretty good job. I think that we've done, we've done what we told you we were going to do. We saved the railroad, we saved the hospital, we've got the best park and recreation in the state of Maryland. We've got the best solar city. You can see it in all your neighborhoods now. I know who my neighbors are, and a lot of them right out here. Um, I think we've done a great job of physical responsibility. Our tax rate remains the same at 71 cents for $100 of evaluation. And I would just appreciate very much if you all would return me to office so that I can continue to work for you.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls.
I want to thank the Board of Trade for hosting this event. If there's anything I want you to take away from this forum, it's this. I commit myself to continuing to be open, honest, committed, and transparent. And I'd like to leave you with this quote from Margaret Mead, a well-known author and speaker. Never doubt that a few thoughtful citizens can change the world. Indeed. It is only thing, it's the only thing that ever has. Your vote makes a difference and your opinion matters. I respectfully ask for your vote and look forward to continuing my service to you. Together, we can make Laurel even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dewalt.
I would like to thank you, Ms. Hunter. I would also like to thank all the members of the Board of Trade. Um, it's, it's a great, like I said before, it's a great honor to sit in front of the Laurel community and speak to them and give them my opinions. Uh, right from the beginning, my three points was to establish integrity, proactive safety initiatives, and outstanding government, government transparency. And I'm, uh, I'm set on those three principles in making, uh, Laurel actually a great city again. I believe it, it's, it's good, but I think with some of the changes and some of the bright ideas and the new ideas of somebody new to the council, it would be even greater. Um, about a year ago, as a board, a board of member, Laurel Board of Trade member, I was able to introduce to the mayor, and I kind of got him in a corner because there was about 15 witnesses there. I got the Hometown Heroes Banner Program approved. We now have, uh, we're going to have our sec, second recipient coming up very, very soon. Um, I've always been for having that Hometown Heroes Banner on Main Street, but when you're the mayor, you can make those decisions to put it on Cherry Lane. I think Main- I think Main Street would be a much more viable and a more honor for those hometown heroes. I also had the good fortune of knowing a great friend of mine, Eddie Sauter, from the American Legion. And he advised me that in the year 2019, the American Legion will be celebrating their 100-year anniversary. And he came up with the idea that possibly from northbound Route One to the American Legion, changing that name in honor of the 100-year anniversary of the American Legion. And then I came up with the idea of possibly putting our Hometown Hero banners in that location. So if we could get that done, I think it would be a great honor to our military veterans and the veterans that, from Post 60 in Laurel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mills.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. It's definitely been an honor. In closing, unlike what you heard tonight from Mike Les, I can deliver change for the Real Team Laurel. And the past three years alone, I have trained over 3,000 Marylanders to create jobs for other Marylanders. These 3,000 have created 6,000 jobs right here in Maryland. This transition into economic development for Maryland and specifically for the City of Laurel. I promise to show the Laurel Police Department that I am dedicated to them by helping the Real Team Laurel to say no to drugs and irresponsible alcohol use and to reduce crime. We have, we have hard-working members that work right now or employees that work with DPW. And I promise to work diligently to assist them with maintenance activities to enhance a more secure foundation of our roads. As a child, my father, John W. Mills, Jr., he was a councilman of Ward Five. And that's where I get my 40 years of experience in grassroots and, and city hall in Seaplex in Maryland. And he told me that, again, when you see a problem, you have the power to solve that problem. There's a problem here in Laurel and I wish to bring about change to, to help and solve these problems. My name is Jeffrey W. Mills and I, and I wish that y'all would help me to become the new ad-large member here in City of Laurel. And in closing, I have proposed a bill to the governor that all trash trucks will be equipped with a Marcus bar. And, and that's going to be in the back of all trash trucks in the state of Maryland. I'm fighting hard for this. This would be a six-foot bar that would stick out from the back of the trash trucks to protect all rear trash, trash truck workers. The Marcus bar is named after Marcus Colbert. May God rest his soul. And thank you very much again. May y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Sidnor.
Once again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Thanks to Board of Trade for hosting this important event tonight. I must say, one of the qualifications is to be a man of integrity, a person of integrity and good judgment. I'm a person of integrity and good judgment. This is very challenging for me tonight, but I know I can serve. I've been serving my whole life as a youth. I worked for the elders in my community, a volunteer, coaching football referee. I've been very active my whole life by serving my country. Now I'm ready to serve, serve my neighbors here in Laurel. So I look privileged for your vote on November the 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidnor and Ms. Nick...
Thank you.
And Ms. Nicholas, thank you.
It's truly been an honor to serve. I try to put myself in other people's shoes. I was, I was born, I was raised to live by the golden rule, to treat people right, to do unto others as they would have you do unto them. I've made myself very available to citizens and I'm just here to do the right thing. I ask to be re-elected to the, to Ward One, to the Laurel City Council to continue to serve the community. Thank you for your time.
So this concludes the forum for tonight. Let me say, we want to thank the candidates, but most importantly, we want to thank the people who have come tonight to hear from the candidates. And I would encourage you, the people, to keep your candidates engaged and hold them responsible and accountable. Thank you very much. Have a good evening and get home safely.
Just a couple of other, we have a few minutes. No, it's all right. We have a few minutes left. So there are some refreshments out in the lobby and the candidates would be willing to answer any questions that we didn't get to. So if you had some questions, unfortunately, we're running out of time. We couldn't get to all the questions. Ask them directly. Thank you very much for attending. And this is going to be telecast again at 10 o'clock this evening, if you want to look at it.[1752.78]